Welcome back to Drop a Jew with Malika. This is our third episode. And today, we're going to get a little bit into politics. Yeah, I said it, some politics. Our guest today is Jamal Braithwaite. He's here to drop some jewels on us about his campaign as he's running for Brockton City Council at large. So let's sit back, relax, and enjoy the show. Let's get right into it. Back to Drop a Jew with Malika, and today we have Jamal Braithwaite, candidate for Brockton City Councilor at Large. Brockton is a town in Massachusetts, close to Boston, metro Boston area, but is a booming city. And I can't wait to hear all about Jamal Braithwaite's plans for the city of Brockton. And you know, I want to be honest. I'm from Boston. And so being from Boston, you know, I've kind of been stuck in my Boston ways, but I've lived in Brockton for about eight years now. And my transition to Brockton was kind of weird because I always felt like I just lived here, right? But I always did everything in Brock, in Boston. But now I have kids, I have a family, I'm a little bit more grounded in Brockton. And the first time I really felt connected to the city was one, at one of your, um, I went to your fundraising event. And I said, let me see what this guy is all about, right? And that I can tell you, that was the first time I, in eight years, I felt connected. You know, I felt like we're down to earth, you really cared about the people and all the issues that I would kind of deal with at home with my family and talk about over dinner and the news. I was like, wait, he's talking about these things. So I was like, I need, I need you on the show because I think this will be really helpful to kind of share, you know, your vision with the city and the, the population. Hear more about you, what brought you to, you know, run for this candidacy, and also who, who is Jamal, right? That's really important to know. So I'll let you get started.
Great. Well, thank you so much for inviting me to the show. I really appreciate it. I really appreciate you coming to the fundraiser to learn more about my campaign. So similar to yourself, I have lived in Brockton for not, you know, not for my whole life. Um, I've lived in Brockton for about six years now. And before I lived in Brockton, I lived in London, England for 10 years, uh, where I worked in, uh, banking as an accountant. And prior to that, I lived in Boston for five years where I finished my undergraduate degree in economics from the University of Massachusetts. And when I moved back to the United States, the one place I wanted to move was Brockton. And reasons for that includes that I wanted to live in the greater Boston area because Boston has a major financial district, one. Two is because, um, Brockton's only 35 minutes from an international airport. And so it was really great for me to just, you know, I can get an Uber and with Uber, you can, we can get in the, uh, uh, carpooling lane and, and, uh, be at the airport in 35 minutes. So that's, that's super cool. And it's very affordable. So I love it. Uh, but, but coming to Brockton, one of the things I realized was that, Brockton, there's definitely, um, areas for improvement. Um, I really love living in the city of Brockton thing. So I love living in Brockton. One of the things that's very unique about Brockton is that one out of three residents in Brockton was actually born in another country. And for myself, I was really attracted to that. I love the diversity of Brockton. It's very unique. There, you know, I don't know any other place in America you can go where one out of three people were born in another country. And so we have a diversity of languages. We have a diversity of experiences. Uh, we have a diversity of culture and I'm really into food and culture. And I'm always learning more. I, I definitely am not a finished product where I know everything, not at all. In fact, I'm continuously learning. And I love the fact that I brought it and I have the opportunity to continuously learn from other people. So when I came to Brockton and, uh, got established, um, I, there was many reasons why I had to engage with City Hall. And I realized when I engaged with City Hall, I just did not feel that, uh, residents, including myself, was getting the level of service that one would expect from really any organization that, uh, serves the public, not unique to the city of Brockton. And so I've been on this journey engaging with City Hall to ensure that they improve our roadways. As well as engaging with City Hall to get clarification on our taxes. Um, we have a new type of bill that exists in the city of Brockton called Stormwater Management Fee. And there are many residents in the city of Brockton that like to verify the amount of that fee they have to pay. And, uh, as of July 20th, 2023, there are many residents that still haven't gained that clarification. And there's, and there are city councilors who are still asking for more information from the executive branch of government to understand, uh, how these bills are being created and these questions still have gone unanswered. And so, uh, the reason I bring up this top because that I see that there's an opportunity for improvement in city government in Brockton. And so I want to contribute to that as a city council at large, very specifically, uh, one of the first things I want to do, uh, as a city council large is I want to pass a resolution to obtain all the bank statements in this city of Brockton and to reconcile that to the city financial statements to, as that is very specific date. To verify the balances of the financial statements and to identify what surpluses exist in the city of Brockton. Because once we look, uh, uh, identify those surpluses, then we can determine, um, really where the priority of these findings could go to, maybe to the public schools, maybe to our roads.
Can I say this? You know, that's really important, you know, um, you know, because people want to know where the, where the money going, right? You know, as many parents have children that are going to the, the public schools, um, out here in Brockton. We're worried, you know, there's been a lot of things in the news about Brockton, about, you know, where's the funding and some cuts that have to be made and that, that makes parents nervous. And, and so one of the things when I first came out here, I said, wow, you know, we, we need, we do need to fix our streets. Like, I didn't think about it as much. But then I started noticing how much my car was getting damaged from those bumps. And I said, wait a minute, we gotta do something here. So, so I think this is, these are some really important topics that you're talking about. But as a city council at large, what is your role? What can you do if you do?
The good question. So the responses of the city councilors generally, um, have certain common responsibilities. Uh, the very first responsibility is to approve the city budget. And so, and as of this year, on June 15th, 2023, the Brockton City Council hosted a public hearing where they have the opportunity to listen to, uh, members of the public to provide input. I believe about six residents out of 106,000 residents actually showed up for that meeting to provide input.
Wait, sorry, six residents out of how many?
Out of 106,000 residents, six of them showed up. And of those six residents, um, one of them was myself. And the other, and, and the other, uh, residents principally were residents who attend, uh, a weekly Zoom call that I host called the Brockton Residence Forum. Where we have an opportunity to review city council meeting agendas and minutes and to reconcile that with resident priorities. So that when we engage with our elected officials, we understand how to lobby them and to prior, uh, set priorities in communication versus just taking photos with them. And so, uh, the, the public hearing is an opportunity to provide that kind of input and, um, the city council ultimately approved the budget. They really didn't provide any input at all or feedback or answers to questions we had before they approved it. It seemed like they kind of had their mind made up before they went in the meeting. And, um, the reason I bring up that topic is that here in the city of Brockton, I feel that we can achieve a lot of common goals, but really we need residents to step up. Not just in voting, but engaging with their elected officials to set priorities. Because in absence of residents engaging with their elected officials and elected officials really don't know what the priorities are. And so they're really just acting, um, on their own initiative versus a collective effort.
And actually, you know, you're right, you know, we as residents all over need to step up, but how, we don't hear about these things like, and many people here don't, you know, English is not the first language, right? So like, I'm sure people have a lot to say and would show up, but even myself, you know, I'm pretty much out there in the news. I try to like, you know, stay you know, the latest things that are going on and I didn't hear about these things. So, so how can residents show up or get more involved?
Absolutely. And connecting the two questions together, the first one and the one you asked earlier about the role of the city councillor. Well, one of the roles of a city councillor is to constantly provide communication to their constituents regarding what is going on with city government. And so one way they can do that is by fostering or facilitating, um, community meetings. Now, it's not often that our elected officials in Brockton host community meetings. I like to see them take place at least on a quarterly basis where they're hosted by our elected officials and that includes our mayor as well as our city councillors. But those meetings really don't take place that much. And so, um, the opportunities to learn more is that residents can take the initiative by, if you go to google.com and input Brockton City Council, you'll see that we have something called the Brockton Events Calendar. On the events calendar, you can see a list of every single city meeting that takes place in the city of Brockton. As well as the city government is prioritizing in terms of your tax. Yeah. So, um, here in the city of Brockton, we have something called the Brockton Events Calendar. And anybody can put a, go into google.com and input Brockton City Council and you'll see, um, on the city council webpage is a section for agendas. And with agendas, we'll have something called the Brockton Events Calendar. And so when you go to the Brockton Events Calendar, you can see every single city meeting taking place. And this would include Brockton City Council meetings as well as, um, sub-meetings such as the Brockton Accounts Committee Meeting, which is an opportunity for city councillors to ask our auditor questions regarding how monies are being spent.
Okay. So that's good information. Thank you for making that connection. But what about the average citizen who's like, well, you know, I, I really don't want to get involved in the politics of, of politics. It's all that politics stuff makes me scared or nervous, right? What would you say to someone like that? Because a lot of people think like that.
Yeah. So what I would suggest is that, um, they, so you know, there's two thought processes. We can be reactive or we can be proactive. If the city of Brockton had beautiful roadways that you were happy with, then roadways, and if you felt that your taxes were sufficient and you feel that your housing is affordable. You might say Brockton is a, is amazing city. I love it. There, there is no need for improvement. And so there's no need to get involved. But if you see in Brockton, an area for improvement, whether you see, I know in Brockton, uh, our roadways, we have over 275 miles of road, public roadways and 90% of them need improvement. If you see that type of need, if you feel our taxes are, are, are being collected and it's very high, it's very costly and you feel that you're saying to yourself, oh my God, it's costing so much. I don't know if I can live here anymore. Then the thing is that that's, that should increase, um, your desire to learn more. And so if you want to learn more, you can, one could attend the Brockton Residence Forum on Sundays from 11 and 12, where we talk about this on, as a, by having a family community conversation. Another way is that you could, um, go to the Brockton Events Calendar, you could track these meetings on your own. We also have something called the Brockton Document Library. And if you Google Brockton Document Library, there you can find all the city council meeting agendas and minutes for every single city meeting. So you can see what's documented. However, one thing I want to highlight is that, um, sometimes those meeting minutes are not uploaded in a timely manner. And so that's where a resident would need to send an email to their, uh, Brockton City Clerk and say, hey, can you please upload the meeting minutes? I, I don't see any minutes for the past three months. Uh, and then hopefully they'll, they'll provide that within a week's notice. Before any sitting meeting takes place, uh, an agenda needs to be, uh, provided to the public at least 40 hours in advance. And so it's an opportunity, you can take a look at all the city agendas. Also, there's an opportunity to just reach out to your city councillor directly and ask them for more information. And that's when you'll really identify the quality of service you're receiving and from your city councillors, because some city councillors may give you more information than others based on their knowledge and based on their level of interest. And so for myself, I have a deep interest. So I'm asking for residents in Brockton, consider me as their first choice for Brockton City Council at Large because I have, um, uh, readily, uh, readily available knowledge about what's going on in city council meetings because I host the Brockton Residence Forum. As well as, um, I have a desire to improve the city of Brockton and, and to share the knowledge that I have regarding the, uh, the workings of Brockton City Government. So I'm happy to share that. But really, I think Brockton is a city that's a work in progress. It's not something in a finished state. And it really, it's going to require more residents being engaged and interested in knowing what's going on in order to, um, in, to, in, in, in order to help drive the change we need in Brockton.
Right. You know, you know, you make a lot of good points and I often feel like Brockton, again, coming from this, this Boston mentality, you know, out my head, but one of the things I, I feel like in Boston, we have a lot more resources, right? And so I think about, um, you know, safety, right, of the school and things like that. I think about maybe, maybe if some parents had an opportunity to have their children go to kindergarten at the age of five versus, or four, five versus six, you know, like all those different things can make a big difference for a lot of parents. But one thing that's on my mind is, oh, it's the streets, you know, the taxes, all those things. We want to know, we want more accountability. And I think what you're saying is there needs to be more organization or organizing, I guess amongst the people, right? And advocacy and being proactive and, you know, bringing up these things and, and be a participant, participants of all the things that are going on. We don't have to do everything, but just be knowledgeable about, about what's going on in the city. But I also think about safety, right? Like safety is becoming a little bit more of a prevalent issue in Brockton. The schools, the streets, and so what can, so the key message is we gotta vote because if you don't vote, you're probably not going to be attended to as much, even though it's not the right thing, but that's the reality. So I was thinking, okay, so it's clear, we need to vote, right? And I know, I, I hate a lot of people get discouraged. Like, why do I vote? It's not going to matter anyways. Or I don't want to get into the politics of politics, right? But the point is we gotta vote. Like, if you want something, you got, you can't, those mouths don't get fed, right? So that's your voice, right? Your vote is your voice. But what if, like, you want to vote, but sometimes a lot of times people, we have a, a lot of people from different places here, right? All over the world, like you said, what if English is not your first language or like people feel connected to certain people just because maybe we're from the same place or the same country. But maybe that person doesn't really do much or really not really, for the, for the people like that or for those issues. What do you suggest to those voters that need to kind of, that have that?
Yeah. So I mean, well, so one of the cool things about Brockton is we have this great diversity of languages. If you're, I want to say, uh, I want to welcome anyone from any language. They can reach out to me, um, on my phone number at 774-428-1525. I'm fortunate in that I actually, um, if I cannot understand you, I'm going to get my wife on the phone. And she speaks five languages and she's actually a medical interpreter at Boston Medical Center. And one of the things that I was really fascinated about coming to Brockton is that she ain't the only one. Uh, having, speaking multiple languages is a very common, uh, skill for many residents in Brockton.
Right. Wow. So, so you, so you are, you are, listen, I feel like you are like so connected in so many ways, like so connected with the community and the people and your wife speaks five languages. What are those languages?
So thank you for asking that question. So the, so yeah, my wife, um, she was born in Portugal. So her first language is Portuguese. Her mother is, um, is from, it was born in Cabo Verde. And so in her house, she spoke Cape Verdean. And, um, the third language is that she, um, see, the third language is that she, well, she, she, she can understand Spanish. And it's very common for a lot of people in Portugal, you'll, you get a lot of interviews in Spanish and Portuguese. And so it's, it's, I don't want to say there's similar, it's a totally different languages, but she's, she's knows Spanish well enough. And, um, what else? Uh, and also she, well, and of course she speaks English and that's, you know, and when I met her, she, um, didn't learn, know English that well, but she does it very well now. And, uh, and also, you know, she lived in Holland, uh, for a while. So she can, she's familiar with engaging in Dutch. And, um, and she, she, yeah, she has a knack for languages. She's into French as well. So, um, one of the cool things is I remember when I lived in London, we would travel to mainland Europe. And it was very interesting whenever she could engage with people in Italian and Spanish and French and, uh, whereas me growing up in America, you know, I only learned to speak English. And so that, um, it really taught me to continuously improve and, and listen. So that I can understand people better and, and understand people from different backgrounds. And Brockton in a lot of ways is like that. It's very common to meet people with, who can speak multiple languages and have, uh, have, have very cultured experiences. And so, what I would suggest is for anyone, regardless of your language, whether you speak Haitian Creole or whether you speak Spanish or, um, or Cape Verdean Creole or Portuguese. I mean, you're welcome to reach out to me directly, um, on my phone number at 774-428-1525. I'd definitely get someone on the phone who can translate for us, uh, so we can enhance, um, or be able to answer any questions you might have. Or, uh, if you'd like to get more involved in the city of Brockton, uh, we can definitely channel you to organizations to speak the language that's native to you. Also in city of Brockton, uh, the city itself has been evolving in a positive way where more city services are, the information is being provided in multiple languages. And, um, we previously had a city councillor named Tina Cardoso. And she really, um, I'd say was pivotal in promoting the need for languages, um, the services in multiple languages. And so, and I could see that the city of Brockton, I think that really stuck with them. And so they're constantly moving in that direction. But it's, once again, it's the kind of service that you have to really continuously ask for, seek if it's there and if it's not asked for it. And, um, but it's something that the city is familiar with, uh, that service need. So.
Wow. So I'm glad that you brought up the positive stuff that is going on. The city is moving in some directions and you have people like Tina Cardoso who have, you know, you know, spearheaded some of those, um, projects. So that's really good. Uh, so shout out to Tina, right? So Jamal, what, what do you think it takes to be a city council at large? What kind of character do you think it takes?
So I would say, uh, qualities that would be good for a city council at large is one is someone who's a people person. Someone who is readily available for the public to call them or to email them, uh, and to, uh, someone who's comfortable with answering questions regarding city service needs. Um, some people complain about, uh, their trash bins aren't big enough. So it's important that someone who's also a problem solver, who's going to identify an issue and track and monitor it until it is resolved. It's also, I'd say, someone who has, um, some level of intellectual curiosity. Because there are topics that come before the city council where councillors are not going to have knowledge prior to that. But it would be helpful to the public if that councillor can actually do some research to learn more. One example is that in 2021, the city had an unfunded pension liability, uh, which required the city of Brockton to borrow $300 million in order to fund that. And so that money is being paid for by taxpayer dollars. And so when you see the roadways are in miserable condition, you might say, well, what, how much money is required to improve those roadways? Well, it's been, it's been determined by the head of the DPW to be about $200 million to improve all the roadways in Brockton. Another 50 million to improve the sidewalks, about $250 million is what we were advised by the, had the DPW. I believe he, uh, advises in the month of, uh, March or April of 2023. And, um, now if we didn't have that unfunded pension liability, well, maybe we could have used the money to improve all our roadways instead. And the reason I bring up that topic is that when I watched the hearings to determine if the city council was going to prove that unfunded pension liability, uh, loan note. I didn't really hear city councillors ask that many questions. And when I engaged with them further on it, I, I got the perception that they lacked knowledge or even the attitude to learn more about that. It's something where they kind of delegated the task to our CFO under the executive branch of government and just assume that, well, you know, that they're the, between the CFO and between the Brockton Retirement Board, they're the real experts on it. But I didn't really see city councillors take a time to really learn about it more. And so I would say that was a bit of a deficit, a knowledge deficit that existed on the city council to, to make a very important decision that has the impact on every single Brockton taxpayer. And so when I saw that level of decision-making taking place, that's really what motivated me or triggered me to want to run for city council because I want those roads improved, every single one of them. And I want to make sure that, because right now I'm concerned that even if the city did receive sufficient money to improve our roadways, I'm concerned that we lack the competency to deliver the service to completion. And so there's a concern that we might be mismanaging money. And so we're lacking the opportunities to really deliver on the services that the city of Brockton really needs.
I like that curiosity part, right? Not just assuming the CFO is going to take care of it or this person's going to take care of it, but let, let's be accountable. And again, that goes back to those receipts, right? That you kind of come with or, or looking for it, right? What are we going to do? Um, and I also like the fact that you brought up the part that, you know, you're that, the people person, right? Like, we automatically assume that people are in these positions are people, people persons, right? But they're not sometimes. And well, you gave out your personal phone number. So I know it's real, right? In that way. You gave out your phone number, you gave out your contact information, you're readily available, you even had a cookout at your house for the, some of the folks that are on your team and volunteers. And so, you know, I can tell that you're a people person. I remember I was working at a job before as a social worker in a hospital and they were like, when I first started working here, they were so excited because it was like, I was like, why is everybody so happy? And it was like, because you actually talk to people. And I was like, that's what I'm supposed to do. They was like, listen, you'd be surprised, the type of people that worked here before as social workers that stayed in their room, wanted to avoid people, isolated, ran away. And, you know, duck and dodge, you know, people. And that's been my experience sometimes, you know, with the, with the city of Brockton. I, I feel like I've been, you know, like, like not just myself, but, uh, because I don't want to think it's a personal thing, but more so, I feel like there has been that ducking and dodging kind of energy kind of flowing throughout the city, not for everyone here. You know, but in, in a lot of ways that, that has been the norm. And so we have to kind of break that cycle, you know, um, if we want to have a better, you know, city. And I know we can do it. It's, Brockton is wide open, as they say, right?
Yeah.
So I, I think there'll be a lot of development here, you know? And, and I think it takes someone or a team of folks that are, are ready to bring that into the city, but in a, in a responsible, ethical way. So, so this, this show is about dropping jewels. And you know what? I'm going to say Jamal, you dropped plenty of jewels already just by, you know, you know, being transparent and honest and, and tough discussing the processes that are in a city that I knew nothing about and many constituents don't know anything about. Is there anything else before we leave for today that you would like to share that you can say is of value to people that are audience? And our audience may not just be Brockton, right? It could be all over the country where they're like, well, why should I vote for a city council too in other cities? You know, a, a city council at large, um, in other cities and states. So what would you share? And, you know, make a connection with yourself because people want to feel connected to you.
Yeah, sure. Well, here's what I'd say. This is something that, uh, this next statement is applicable to any city in the country of the United States of America. On November 15th of 2021, uh, the President of the United States signed into law a bill called the U.S. Infrastructure and Investment Jobs Act. And with that, what that provided was $1 trillion to America to improve our infrastructure. And uniquely in the state of Massachusetts, in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, that meant that, uh, the state got $9.5 billion to improve our infrastructure. And then in the city of Brockton, it's not clear how much of that money is coming here. Uh, that's another time sensitive reason why I want to run for city council because I feel like this is the opportunity, this is the time to improve all those roadways and sidewalks and the infrastructure that is so derelict in Brockton. I want to highlight that one of the things that somebody asked me the other day, you know, what is Brockton famous for? I'd say there's a couple of things Brockton's famous for. There, there's actually a long list of things Brockton's famous for, but I'm going to highlight a couple of things that stand out to me. Number one is that Brockton is probably the most diverse municipality in all of New England in that one out of three residents was born in another country. So it's just very diverse. Um, one, two is that it's also known as having the worst city infrastructure than any other city in the state of Massachusetts. So for me, uh, this is the U.S. Infrastructure and Investment Jobs Act is an opportunity to, um, rebuild the city of Brockton and to improve our infrastructure. So this is the time we should be, uh, capitalizing on. And one year has already passed. 2022 was an opportunity for the city of Brockton to apply for monies through Mass Department of Transportation. We only have four more years where we can apply for these monies. And each year, there's so much of a tranche available of monies to apply for. And so I'd recommend we get on it now. And, uh, in 2022, the city council in Brockton never passed a resolution to have the mayor or the CFO come before them to describe what, um, monies have been awarded to Brockton for this purpose. And, and we have another 2023, we're in, we're about at the midpoint now in July. Would they still haven't passed a resolution to talk about this? So it's a real silence on this topic when this is, should be one of those active conversations. So that's why I'm begging and pleading the city of Brockton residents to please go out and vote on September 19th, 2023 and November 7th. And I'm asking for your vote, Jamal Braithwaite for Brockton City Council Large. So we can build the most beautiful city in Massachusetts, but we need to make sure we, uh, take advantage of these monies that have been made available by, by the federal government. I don't think we're, we're leaving money on the table. We can't do that. And so what I'd say for anyone listening, uh, in any other jurisdiction is, you know, ask your local elected officials, how is the U.S. Infrastructure and Investment Jobs Act improving our community? How much money is coming in and how is it being used? And what's the timeline that we can see? So that's what I'd recommend people from any municipality to ask their elected officials, how is the U.S. Infrastructure and Investment Jobs Act improving their community to improve the infrastructure? Because here in the city of Brockton, uh, it's not clear how much money and what projects are, are, are being prioritized. And I want to make sure moving forward, that's more visible and understand, understandable by any resident in the city of Brockton.
Money's on the table. So it's time for us to go, the time is now, as they say. Money's on the table, so it's time for us to go, the time is now, as they say. What more else can you say after that, Jamal?
What I want to say to everyone is if you'd like to learn more about myself, you can go to votejamal.com. That's my website. You can send me an email at jamalbraithwaite at gmail dot com. That's all J A M A L. B R A T H W A I T E at gmail dot com. Or you can call me directly at seven seven four four two eight fifteen twenty five. Once again, that's seven seven four four two eight fifteen twenty five. I'm available every day and there ain't no set hours of operations. You can call me anytime. And I'd love to hear from you. So please reach out. My name is Jamal Brathwaite, running for Brockton City Council at Large, and I host events almost every single month. So if you'd like to come to one of my events, please just reach out to me and I'll send you an invite. Thank you so much.
He said he's here every day, all day. Thank you, Jamal. It's been a pleasure. You definitely got my vote, but the more important part is we want the city to move forward with the time is now. It's time to take advantage of all the changes that can come to the city if we have the right people in place to do the job. Thank you so much for being here, Jamal. We really appreciate it. You've dropped many jewels on us today. Learned a lot about our city and what to do and what we can do. And I hope the folks that are listening to this will take some action because. Close mouths don't get fed, you know, we all have power. Don't think just because you're one person, what is my vote going to count? That vote adds up. I tell my clients and I tell my family and all my kids, if you do nothing, you will get nothing. Zero plus zero equals zero. But if you do a little bit here and a little bit there, it adds up to something. So you do have power that one person does matter. Don't think you don't.
Thank you so much and thank you for inviting me. I really appreciate it. I want to highlight one last statement is that. When it comes to improving the city of Brockton, it it's the solution really isn't one man or one woman. Who's going to go out there and make a difference. Really, it's going to require everybody stepping up. And so I'm asking for, if you'd like to learn, if you'd like to be a part of the campaign to elect Jamal Brathwaite for Brockton City Council Large. Please reach out to me. I need, we're going to need all the volunteers we can get. To raise awareness so we can get as many friends, neighbors and family members out there to the polls on September nineteenth and November seventh. Thank you.
The Drop a Jewel with Maleka podcast episode today is sponsored by Spa Paula B. Redefining your neighborhood spa. For more information, go to spa paula b dot com.